Eddie, can you give me a second? There are five minutes.
And this is the correction. Let me see. Three, three.
Correction.
Good morning. I'll call the Cook County Board of Commissioners to order. All rise please for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I would like to add, this would be a consent agenda except I just did it this morning, so I would just add it as 7B. And it's just going back to our approval of the Bannadade Trail Association loan in October. It just didn't have the authorization for the board chair and the auditor to sign the loan documents. And we're just preparing the loan documents now, so I'd just like to add that approval of the signing of the documents. So I'll add that as 7B if that's all right.
Okay.
Madam Chair, we've, under 3C, there was one job description that was put into that list that was not supposed to be in that list. So the job, we'd like to pull the social services fiscal officer position. That still needs to be reviewed by the Personnel Committee. And I would imagine we would pull the whole list of 3C then for individual consideration. But we don't want to just pull the one job out of that packet. The rest have been reviewed and are ready to go forward. And then item number 9A, facility design. I'd like to pull that item for right now for future consideration.
And that's all? Okay, motion to approve.
So move.
You have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye, aye. Okay. At this time, we're going to have a few folks who would like to come forward to have some concern. Whoever would like to start off? You can sign in and give us a piece of paper.
Good morning. I'm Nancy Seton, and I'm here on behalf of the Gunflint Trail Scenic Byway Committee. The Gunflint Trail Scenic Byway Committee would like to share some of our goals with you as construction projects are planned and maintenance schedules are created. First, a little bit of history. In 2000, the Gunflint Trail was determined eligible for the National Register of Historic Places by the Minnesota State Historic Preservation Office, or SHPO. The Gunflint Trail was designated a national scenic byway in 2009, and with the Federal Highway Administration recognizing its natural and historic intrinsic qualities. In 2012, the county had a document created, Architecture History Inventory and Assessment of the Potential Effect and Reconstruction of the Gunflint Trail, researched and created by Gemini Research. This document was authorized and partially funded by MINDOT and FHWA. This particular document cautions against many small changes cumulatively undermining the SHPO determination. It is recommended that guardrails, signs, and other man-made objects continue to be used very sparingly along the Gunflint Trail. This will help minimize the number of elements that detract from the historic property and its wilderness setting. End quote. Today, we're specifically concerned about excessive highway signage, out-of-character guardrails, both new and old, and invasive non-native plant species. While some of the highway signage is necessary for safety and directional needs, too much signage detracts from the very reasons people live, visit, and recreate on the Gunflint Trail. It also dilutes the traveler's attention to any one sign. One more new sign does not appear to be a game changer, but cumulatively, they diminish the character of the Gunflint Trail. When the section of the road from Trout Lake towards town was repaved in 2010, no new signs were added. Some were replaced. When the Eight Mile section, farther up the trail recently, between Cross River and County Road 92, was redone, there were over 30 new signs added, bringing the total number to roughly 70 on this section of road. Eight miles, 70 signs. Do we want to incrementally change the character of the Gunflint Trail National Scenic Byway? The previous highway engineer indicated the recent ATV signage would be changed and minimized. Could that happen this year? And as projects are planned for 2019 and 2020, can we keep signage to a minimum? And can any other signage or empty posts be removed? There are countless guardrail designs available, as well as regulations determining what's needed where. We ask that industrial-looking options be avoided and rustic appearance be pursued. The 2012 report previously cited states, "The addition of modern steel guardrail, while a seemingly small change if considered separately, would add a new visual element that would contribute to the diminishing of the road's ability to convey its historic character." Highway designers are given flexibility from standard road specifications for several design elements through the use of design exceptions or variances. This process could also explore using an FHWA-approved guardrail that is visually more appropriate to the historic and natural setting. Creative options are possible for a unique road like the Gunflint Trail. Our committee is also finding our energy directed at dealing with invasive species. By their very nature, they crowd out the native plants that give the Gunflint Trail its natural intrinsic qualities. They keep it a Minnesota treasure, as opposed to any road USA. Spotted knappweed and other invasives are alelopatic, meaning they poison the soil to prevent other plants from growing around them. Fireweed, pearly everlasting strawberries, blueberries, dogbane, wild roses, evening from roses, and countless others all are diminished by these non-native invasives. The 2010 Gunflint Trail Scenic Byway Vegetation Management Plan documents the native and non-native species of concern and is an excellent document to reference. The Scenic Byway Committee was awarded $150,000 grant to address invasives along a section of the upper Gunflint Trail. We are partnering with the Forest Service to see the work implemented. Yet, it seems that our most efficient efforts
Nancy, can you wrap it up?
Okay, yeah. Would be to keep them from getting established in the first place. As road projects are planned, will equipment be clean to minimize the introduction of more invasive species? Can the use of seed mixtures appropriate to our woodland location be used? These three topics, signage, guardrails, and invasive plants, are important in preserving the qualities that make the Gunflint Trail unique, and we ask that they are seriously considered when planning work along the road. Thank you for your time.
And thank you for providing us. Okay, would like to be next. And as you know, sign in, and we will give you five minutes for your concerns.
I don't know how many of you know, but Nancy Seton is responsible for the most photographed moose in Cook County. And that's the one on the water tower just outside of town. She spearheaded that effort, and I get to see it every time I go home. So I think that's great. A couple of weeks ago, some very highly classified identifying medical information appeared in the local law enforcement report as it appeared on the Internet. And even though it came down within two days, I think you know the way the Internet works. Once it was posted, it stays there forever. If you go looking for it, you can still find it. I'm wondering if the county board knows about it? And if so, what has been done about it? What disciplinary actions have been taken? It's a violation of federal law, and the federal law takes that release of information very seriously. The other thing I wonder about is the federal law also requires self-reporting. And I wonder if the people involved did self-report so that the federal government can do a proper investigation. Thank you.
Thank you. So Ann, to give you your five minutes, you have given us a letter in regards to your concern, maybe if you kind of want to highlight it, because we do have this to refer to.
Sure, good morning, yes. So I've handed out a copy of my letter that I just wrote to the Sawtooth Bluffs Planning Committee in regard to the Sawtooth Bluffs Master Plan Planning Process. And so I'll just summarize that letter in case some of you haven't read it. I contacted Arrowhead Regional Development Corp., oh, excuse me, Commission, ARDC, and to comment on the Sawtooth Bluffs Master Plan Planning Process and request a public meeting for that project. And then, in this letter, I discussed that the master plan planning deadline is February 28th, two weeks from now. And as of today, there's no draft plan that's been released to the public. And so, at this point, there's a lack of time for, I think, to include the public in any additional comments on the plan. And then, I say to the Hofland Dock Project and Wayside project that ARDC and the county had come up with, and how there was a lack of community public engagement in planning that project and the reaction to the project. And then finally, I just commented on the consequences of minimizing local input. And so, I did CC the Cook County Commissioners in my letter. So everyone has a copy. So I've spent a lot of time trying to figure out this planning process for the Sawtooth Bluffs Master Plan. And I've spoken to the planning committee members, the public neighbors, friends, and I've also engaged professionals who have knowledge in certain aspects of the project that may be affected by decisions in this master plan. And I've come to realize that there's a lot of misinformation being conveyed. There's also some incorrect assumptions floating around. And there's just been a general lack of context for this project. And so, as a resident of Old Ski Hill Road, we are potentially affected by the project. And so, I'm here on my own behalf, but I've spoken to a lot of neighbors who support me and have read this letter and have been engaged in this planning. Kind of in the background, we all supplied comments and so forth. So I just wanted to bring your attention to what I feel has been a lack of public engagement in this process and the lack of information available to make reasonable comments about the project. And so, my general comments are in this letter, but I did want to make a couple of additional comments specific to Old Ski Hill Road. And many of the residents that I've spoken to are not opposed, per se, to any type of development on the Sawtooth Bluffs, including whatever may or may not happen on Old Ski Hill Road. But what we do want is a constructive process that, to help identify the best site-specific options up there. And also considering, well, several things, like the potential economic benefits, environmental concerns. We'd like to get some more information about local road and traffic safety and maintenance concerns. And then, and also maintain the residential characteristics of the road. And so, I know those things probably come later, but we are potentially affected by the Sawtooth Bluffs project. And one of the comments I heard from someone on the planning committee was that, oh, well, a small parking area at the end of your road will make no difference. And so, it's comments like that that are red flags in the planning process and speaks to the need for more public engagement. And so, I did request a public meeting to talk about this project. I wanted to convey that there's a lot of ongoing local recreational activity on Old Ski Hill Road that a lot of people probably don't know about. And it's not just residents, but it's locals. Bicycling, dog walking, all kinds of things. I have a whole list of activities by people that use the road already. And so, finally, I just wanted to make a suggestion that this master plan is supposed to wrap up in two weeks. And given the lack of public input, I would suggest that the final master plan be delayed. And if that's not possible, then perhaps try and get an extension or figure out, finding funds to continue the master planning process until it's fully completed. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ann. That's very important news and ideas. And if you step, Ann, if you step over to Stacy and give your contact information, someone will get back to you. Thanks. Okay, anyone else?
I just have a short thing I wanted to point out, and it may relate to what was previously talked about. I'm speaking just as a resident of the, a longtime resident of the Gunflint Trail. Oftentimes, the county board has to rely on the expertise of people in their departments for information. What I'm asking today is that there's a certain document that I would like, if it's possible for you all to review to better educate yourself on what is required versus what is suggested versus what is optional concerning roadway signage. The document itself is, it's called "Minnesota's Best Practices for Traffic Sign Maintenance and Management Handbook", including insight on how to remove unnecessary and ineffective signs. It's an extremely, it's a MINDOT document, which is extremely well put together, easy to understand. And it would make you all a little bit more familiar about what really is required and what isn't required. Because there is a lot of misconception. I've seen before when a giant document, which is "The Minnesota Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices", is put down on a table, and it's, well, I have to deal with all of this. Well, really what that is, is it's when you use signage, these are the way they have to be. It isn't saying you have to use these signs. And this, the document I was mentioning, Minnesota's Best Practices for Traffic Sign Management, is an abbreviation of that that also includes sections on costs of signage, how to reduce your, the county's cost for signage, liability, and, you know, how you protect yourself with liability. And then, it very clearly explains what is required and what isn't required. And just as a couple examples, it would, I would appreciate it if everybody could go through this. It wouldn't take you long. A couple examples. For regulatory signs, the only signs that are required are speed limit, if, other than statutory, one-way or do not enter, always stop, or stop or yield if at a passive railroad. For warning signs, railroad advance warning are required, clearance if under 14.6 feet, advanced traffic notification if limited sight distance, such as where you're putting up stop ahead and then a stop sign. It's not required, and it's only recommended if you can't see the stop sign. Horizontal alignment, which would be curves, chevrons, arrows, are only required if you have more than 1,000 AADT, which is average annual daily traffic, which is a traffic study where they go over a count of all the cars for a year and then divide it by 365. It also talks about, it's very interesting to see the studies that show what signage are actually ineffective and not recommended. And just so you know, no passing zone signs, which we had never had before in the county, but now there were 13 put up at that Eight Mile section at the end of the road. They are not required. They are not suggested. They aren't an option. It's, I just would like you to also look at that before you make decisions on highway signage and working with the new highway engineer and stuff. Because in the document, it talks about people have this misconception. Counties oftentimes have a misconception that what is in the manual on uniform traffic control means that that's what they have to do by regulation. No. There's only two real, you know, there's only, out of the hundreds of signs, there's only 15 that are actually required, and only under certain conditions. That's all I have to say.
Did you sign in? Please, thank you. Anyone else? So we can move on to the next item, which will be for Rena to give a presentation on.
Consent agenda first, or?
We're done.
Oh, we're done? You already did the consent agenda?
Yeah.
No, we're done. I don't have a consent agenda.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I have an amended agenda.
Okay. Okay, so we have anything on the consent agenda that anybody would like to call? Okay, I have a motion to the agenda?
I'll move.
A second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye, aye. Then we'll move on to Rena.
Okay. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I, you know, I try to get in here like at least once a year and give you an update on what my department has been doing and where we're going. Give you a little context for all the times they come in and ask for things or give reports on things. So that's why I'm here this morning. So, let's see. So I have a little bit of an agenda. I'm going to talk about who the department is again, kind of review what our roles are and what we do in those roles. Talk a little bit about the past and what we've been working on and why, where we're headed in the future. And then, what are our, what are some of the key benefits to the county? And I would just say that I'm not going to follow that as a list. I'm not going to answer this. There'll be, that information will be woven throughout. And that's what I plan to cover. I may cover more things than that. I may cover less than that, but it'll be hopefully informative, whatever I end up covering. You know how I am, I just kind of wander sometimes. But I wanted to spend a little bit of time first, though, talking about who is MIS or what is MIS? And what is it that we do? You see there, our mission is to provide secure, reliable, state-of-the-art IT and communication products and services that enable Cook County Government to deliver its services effectively and efficiently. It's a little wordy, but the bottom line is, we're kind of a utility. We're a central service for the county. We provide an infrastructure of technology and communication tools. Some of those are radio communication tools for public safety. Some of them are Internet and Intranet tools for communicating with our constituents. But many of them are also servers and computers and mobile devices that we provide that people can do their work, hopefully more efficiently and effectively. Over the last three and a half years, we've concentrated on infrastructure, because our infrastructure was in pretty bad shape. It wasn't reliable. It would go down. People would have to reset servers all the time. I had a lot of people doing overtime. So we've concentrated on getting that in better shape, getting it more secure, doing the things that make it more like a utility, that make it predictable. And just to kind of talk about that just a little bit. So we focused our project time on things like a new phone system, server rooms, and we've re-cabled, or we've fibered most of our buildings. We've worked on network security and replacing really old systems that were critical systems. We've moved some of our infrastructure, like our AS400, to cloud services to increase the uptime and improve the security and redundancy. We've, it also reduces our staff effort, freeing them up to do other things. We have transformed our GIS platform. We're going to talk about that a little bit more, making it ready to launch a lot of employee and citizen services. We launched a new website that's foundational to most of our public communication. While we also, when we did that, we also implemented quite a few of online services, like e-permitting and payments online. We've created operational calendars so that we can keep up with things. We've created a standard agreement to be used for our tower tenants that's made a world of difference in terms of our contracting ability. We've replaced a tower up on the hill up here, and we added a new one at the LEC. And then, we've been adding new tenants to our tower structure, as well as getting contracts for ones that didn't have them. So those are just a few examples of the over 60 projects that we've done in less than four years. And when you have a staff of four, that's a pretty remarkable number, I think. But the result is really a transformation to a much more reliable, secure foundation for our county's government. So arguably, these three services that are in the department, we have IT part of the department, the RGIS part, which handles all of our mapping, and our radio communication. In many counties, these three things are actually managed separately. You'd find radio communications and public safety, GIS maybe in land services, and then an IT department. The department name, Management of Information Services, is way more than IT. We are managing all those information pieces. And I hope today, over the course of the next few minutes, to explain why that's a great benefit to the county and what we plan to do with that integration a little bit. Okay, so let's take them quickly, each part. So IT, which is what most people think I do, and which is what I thought I was going to do when I got here, found out I was doing more than that, is really two broad areas, and we have one person in each area. We have a person, Kirk, who handles our end-user parts of things and our web services. And the web services include both our SharePoint Intranet as well as the website. He also builds all of the computers for all of you and all of our staff. He's currently building more than 20 new computers for the public safety big project. All of those computers have to be rebuilt. So if you go in Kirk's office right now, you'd be behind a wall of boxes where he's got all of these new computers to build. And he's also working a lot on exploring how to use SharePoint for better file management. SharePoint is part of Office 365, and it's our Intranet, but it gives us web access. You can access SharePoint from anywhere securely. So one of the things that we're doing and working on a lot are taking paper-based files that we have, like old permits before e-permitting, and getting those in SharePoint so that somebody can access them, a staff member can access them when they're in the field, right? So they don't have to come back to the office and go through paper. If they're on a site, they could actually pull up everything related to that property ID and see the history while they're in location. So those are the kinds of things we're working on in information technology. On the network server side of things, that's what Kevin does. And that's more of the, really, the infrastructure that you don't see. That's our switches and our routers and how we get to the Internet, and it's a lot of network security. It's also our servers where all of our files are stored. And there's a lot of redundancy issues and security issues, keeping that updated, making sure that it doesn't get attacked or hacked. It's kind of Kevin's responsibility. He's working a lot on. He's working a lot on, we're working now, knowing that Kevin will be retiring at some point in the near future, our system documentation, getting the last of our infrastructure updated and finishing some other projects that leave us in good redundant shape. So what I, one thing I want you to come away with this is this area has a lot of growing complexity and it changes very quickly. And it's also, we're being asked with the same resources and we've been able to handle it so far, to do more and more. One example of increased responsibility, so in 2015, I budgeted for 80 Office 365 users. Now, this year, we budgeted for 145 of them. And the reason that we're budgeting for more is because we're going to do the right thing and we're going to bring all employees onto Office 365. They all have an email address so that they can get employee-wide emails and they can look at SharePoint, the employee internet, things like that. It's a good thing, but it's an 81% increase in the number of users we support. And that's a big deal because people forget their passwords or they need help with something or they have questions and that's one person that's picking that extra stuff up. So something to keep in mind that we are increasing the amount of service that we're providing. And so one of the strategies that I've been trying to do is reduce the complexity or operationalize things so it's more standard so that we have less reacting to things. Things just kind of run in a more predictable way because we're operationalized it, freeing up more time to do increased things. So that's kind of the approach that we've been taking there. Our GIS area, our geographical information systems is Kyle and he has, as you can see, operational tasks and he has project things that you've been hearing a lot about like Esri Online and Pictometry and the Pictometry Cloud. When I first got here, Lyle made, Eric Lyle, Kyle made a statement to me that actually surprised me. He said arguably GIS makes up around 80 to 90% of all county data. I thought, what? I didn't, I thought, you know, I'm not sure that's an accurate statement, but he's actually right. As I've been here longer, I've realized that all of our property data, including permits, wells, tax information, all of that stuff is all GIS linked. Then you can go over to the highway information. You've got culverts and center lines and bridges and signs and guardrails and all of those things have a GIS component to them. And our public safety uses a GIS integration with the dispatch system and it's going to be much better in the new software where on their, on their computers in their cars, they will actually, when they're going somewhere, be able to see a map, see where the entrances are, see where, you know, the issues, what's the best way to get to where they're going, maybe to a site they've never been before. So the GIS integration is a big deal there. So he's also the keeper and the builder of all that data. So GIS data kind of occurs in layers. You just keep adding to it, you know? If you want to add center lines on highways, you get those data points and you add them and you keep adding all of those data points so that you can keep, you can, you can look at the data in multiple ways. So what we've done is we're pushing that out into the cloud and that'll make it easier. We'll put more and more, publish more and more applications on our website for people. We're in the, we're at that point now of starting to publish those for citizens. But we're also starting to create a lot of applications for departments, for land services, for assessors, for them to do work in the field and gather that information in the field on mobile devices. So there's a lot of work coming up there in the near future on that. One of the really advantages for us is that Kyle has a hard time working on projects because he has so much operational work. You know, somebody from the auditor's office needs him to do a parcel split. So what he's going to be doing instead is creating tools for them to do that themselves easily. And then they are owning their own data and they will be building their own data. So he's, rather than him doing all that information and input, he'll build them the application which gives them better access to their data and as they do their work, they're building those data layers themselves. So it's a real transformation in the way we're doing, doing our work. Does that make sense mostly? It's a lot of information, I know. The last area is our radio communication area. And I think you all know that county owns 11 towers. Rowan supports those towers. He also supports over 700 radios for volunteer firefighters or public safety people, the highway department, EMTs, search and rescue. There's a lot of radios out there. And so whenever there's something that needs to be pushed down or whenever they all need to be tuned every couple, three years, it's a lot of radios that we have to touch. He's also our county armor administrator. It's a kind of an official role at the state and he also manages our county paging system. So he gets involved recently in projects with the hospital because their paging system wasn't working with dispatch. So he was called in to do things like that. What we're really working on a lot right now is trying to get his work, one person doing all of that, operationalized so that he can manage it. We've created a policy that prioritizes, you all were involved in that, I think, how towers are used based on minimizing the impact of towers. We're currently working with land services to revise our tower ordinance to get it up to date, to try and really make it less ambiguous in spot, make sure it matches current FCC law and also to get it ready for the amount of traffic we know we're going to have coming to us on towers because of the FirstNet project that's being rolled out. FirstNet, in case you don't know what that is, it's the new public safety self-service network that's being rolled out by the federal government. The state of Minnesota is participating and AT&amp;T has won that contract and they have five years to basically roll this out. And they will, they have a mandate from the feds. So we're trying to get our towers in shape to ensure that the place where they locate is on our towers where there's room rather than going out and building more towers. Really concerted effort on our part to maximize the use of the county's towers and minimize the impact of any new towers by trying to make sure that they're only built when they're absolutely necessary. So you'll be seeing more on that in the next month. We've also created, done some work on doing a cost analysis of what are actual costs of maintaining our towers, both for replacement but also for doing structural things. Come up with some numbers on that and trying to understand how our revenues from the towers can offset those costs. So we've been doing things much like that. We've added three new cell service tenants, or we have three in place and we have projects underway for three to four more this next year. And we've also started to get contacted by AT&amp;T about FirstNet. So it's going to be a lot of, a lot of activity for us trying to manage that. So when I started, I said we have three distinct services and the future of those services in where I'm going and where many of our projects are going in the next year are about things I've already talked about, but I'll just summarize it. In radio communication, we're really focusing on getting an operational model for our towers, get things under contract that haven't been under contract and getting ourselves ready for the cell services coming through FirstNet and probably other vendors trying to compete with that. I, in the IT world, we'll have more and more emphasis on mobile devices and how do we manage those mobile devices and then using, getting our SharePoint up to speed so that people can, when they're in the field using those mobile devices, they have access to the same information they would in the office. And then last, GIS is now taking that turn to creating those very job-specific applications. Could be done independently, but I'd like to make the case of how we manage these things together. In radio communicate, if we were to just think about where there's an overlap between radio communication and more cell service in the county and mobile devices used by county employees, you can see that the overlap of those two things is really about information access wherever you are. Not, you don't have to be sitting at your desk or going through a file cabinet. It's about having access where you're working. So this is really important. I'm going to give you a couple of examples. In our sheriff squads, currently they have computers in their cars, they have AT&amp;T air cards, but with the limited cell service in the county, most of the county, they don't have any live access to that computer. So what that means is if they're out on a remote road somewhere, on the grade, and they stop a car for whatever, and our deputies are all alone in their cars, there's not like backups two miles away or anything else, and they want to check that license plate before they get out of that car to see if there's any issues or warrants or anything else, they won't have access up there. So they're kind of, they can call in on their, on the radios, they have good armor access and dispatch can help them, but they don't have that information readily there even though their computers could do it because we don't have cell access. So that's part of what FirstNet is about, is getting that access for emergencies and for our public safety people so that they can use the tools that they more and more depend on. We also have staff like social workers have laptops for home visits throughout the county. And in the past, without an internet connection, they would download the forms that they thought they would need and fill them out, fill them in offline at the site, maybe just pull up the form. Or perhaps they would use their computer to take notes and then when they come back, they have to enter that into a, into a system. Now they would be able to, with cell service, if we equip their computers that way, an ability to enter that stuff there, meaning they have less work to do when they get back. So it's an efficiency kind of an issue. They could also look up things, check their emails, see if there was another client call that was close by that they needed to attend to without coming all the way back to the office. So as we develop better document management tools, like the ones I mentioned with e-permitting, that's effective too. That's one way to kind of combine these things together. Another way might be to look at mobile devices and GIS applications. Today, the assessor's office, they go out in the field, they take their measurements, they make a lot of notes and then they come back and they work hours in the office inputting all that into their systems, transferring pictures from their cameras, whatever. So how that will work when they have some connect, without connectivity but with a mobile device and GIS applications, so they'll be able to look at those, they'll be able to use their GIS applications offline, gather information, data points, measurements of houses, heights of buildings, a lot of different things, using a surface like you have with a camera in it and GIS applications. And then when they come back to the office, those things would sync up and those would update the GIS and other things. So even without cell service, the combination of mobile devices and applications will still improve their, still improve their world. However, the one thing I want to go for is this very philosophical idea that everything is connected. And we actually have a great opportunity by managing these three things together to do things really well. So, I mean, this is the vision. This is what we've been working for. We've been working to get each one of these things operationalized and build the foundations so that we can actually get to this point. So let's, let's just see what that might mean for a couple of departments. For our land services staff who is maybe now in the field using a mobile device that has access to the internet via cell service, this employee can, while they're out somewhere, out on, off the Arrowhead Trail, they could check their email, they can look up historical permits in the field using SharePoint, they can gather GIS points and see the impact of those changes in real time with a high-resolution photo background because of the new pictometry. They can update an e-permit while performing the inspection. They can do all of that. Another example is when Rowan, our radio communication analyst, is at a remote tower site, he could check the contracts and tenants on there. If he's looking up at a tower and he sees something is not quite right, he will have the ability to go and check contracts or pictures or other things to understand whose antenna that is and who he needs to call. He'd be able to make that, those emails from the site. He could also check in right there with the office or contact a crew. He can look up all kinds of kind of information in the field. Right now, when something's wrong at one of those towers, he sometimes has to drive like to the Gunflint Tower two or three times to get something resolved because he doesn't have those communication tools there. So he could also update an operational calendar, do, you know, an assessment, a lot of different things. The highway department, while driving down the road, could use apps to verify culverts or add new things, signs or whatever when they're doing something, update center line information. They'd just be able to do that, gather those points as they're driving, it's updating GIS. So those are just a few examples of what this, managing these things together can mean for us. I kind of like to think about it as it's really optimizing a solution because these things are managed together under one vision, we can get more enhanced services than if we were thinking about them separately. We can do that together, they arrive at the same time and I think puts us in a really nice spot to do better and better county work and services. So I'm a, one of, kind of a bugger. This is one of my favorite statements, whenever we get an idea is like, it's not good enough to build it, how will we support it? You know, we're adding more and more work to a small staff. So how do we, once we build it, how do we maintain it so that it doesn't just be a flash in the pan and then it becomes another thing that causes us trouble? So here's a few things that we've been working on that help us work towards sustainable things. We've been looking at tower revenues, supporting our operations of tower infrastructure. I know we've talked about this in the past. And the radio communication program, so if we're going to have 11 towers, they need maintenance, they need things happening to them. So how do, how do revenues offset that, looking at those sorts of things? GIS service level agreements and a service portfolio. Kyle is potentially going to be creating hundreds of new apps. How does he manage that? How does he know what's for who? How does he know which one was last updated? So getting us into a place where we manage that inventory of applications and know when something's life cycle has expired or it needs to be updated for some reason, that's a big effort. It's not very sexy, but it's very important. And also, one of the things I know that we need to do that we haven't done yet, but as we think about more mobile devices, is come up with how are we going to manage those devices? How do we keep them secure? What are the policies related to that? What kind of software do we need to manage them remotely? Some of those things. So that's another project we're just starting to work on now. So that's a, not as quick as I wanted, but a quick update, I think, of a lot of things that we have going on and I would be happy to take your questions.
Well, thank you very much. Lot of good information and I appreciate the fact that you take it kind of step by step. I know it's hard that way, but you think it through and look at each of the goals and that's, that's the beginning of starting, starting with a goal. So we'll open it up for discussion. Commissioner Duchesne?
A lot of information.
I know.
No, good work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Duker?
So you made a comment about the assessors being able to use surfaces in the field instead of commenting surfaces like we use. I'm the only one. So we had a plan many years ago before many other people were elected that we would utilize these so that we would save money with printing out packets, mailing packets and people printing them at home, costing the county money and Commissioner Duchesne, if there's a holiday, doesn't get his information. So I know your office is busy and you have a lot on your plate. What's going on with us as commissioners with how we use this? Have we decided that we're no longer using surfaces and we're going back to paper and postage?
Well, we, going on there, they also have, they have two dinners. They have the Cootie Dinner, the Venison Dinner and that, I'm going there tomorrow. So that they have invite from the region, from our region, they invite different service officers, commanders and the veteran service officers so that we can all connect and network there. And then I go and visit the county veterans that we have there. Also had a table at the Community Connect event and connected with some veterans there. Attended the Minnesota CBSO Spring and Fall Conferences and also attended the National CBSO... CBSO Conference, which is paid for, except for my wages, is paid for by the grant. You have to maintain a certain amount of credits each year in order to be accredited with the National CBSO Organization and with the different service organizations. And those, in service organizations, I mean, like the American Legion, the DAV, the VFW, that kind of thing. The veterans make up about 9% of Cook County population. We have a report that we get each year, and it's just expenditures, geographic distribution of VA expenditures, and for our county in fiscal year 16, expenditures were $1,886,000 that veterans from our county have brought in for compensation claims and pension claims, which is money into our county. We also bring in medical dollars, and if they ever get figured out the program with allowing the veterans to use their county medical facilities, that will have a, you know, pretty good impact on that also. So other than that, it's all, get in a nutshell. Questions?
Thank you, Pat. We'll start with Commissioner Sievertson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Pat, you just mentioned access to the medical facilities here. Could you just speak a little bit more about what that would look like? Because, like, the current rules are that veterans be treated only in veteran facilities?
Well, you have to, if the VA is going to pay for it. So right now, they have what's called a choice program, and it doesn't work very well. It's very, very difficult to get authorized your visits and so on and so forth, and then for them to pay, plus you have to, the facilities have to contract with the VA in order to do that. So, and that's a lot of paperwork and a lot of misery to set up, but once it's done, apparently it's pretty easy to keep going with them. But I've also talked about trying to get a couple beds up at the nursing home contracted with the VA, so our residents don't have to go to Two Harbors, or to Duluth, or Silver Bay, and that's kind of a, they, in order to be contracted with the VA, you have to be up to certain levels, and of course, with the construction and everything, it's kind of been a no-go, but I was told that they don't have the level that, the standard that the VA wants in order to be contracted with them.
Wow.
I, you know, I don't know what that's all about, but that's what I was told.
So it sounds like it's really complicated, but from your point of view, if it was possible, it would make a huge difference?
I think it would. But then there's other people too that say, even if, you know, we did contract, we would still go to Silver Bay. I mean, it's a beautiful place down there, and, you know, with all, you know, other veterans and so on, and, but I think it would, I really do.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for all you do. I think this is a very important service for our veterans, and I think we just can't help them enough for what they've done and served, so thanks for that.
Commissioner Duker?
The one thing you didn't mention in all your numbers is you do this part-time.
Yes, 20 hours a week.
So all of these contacts, all of the work that she does.
There's a lot of work that should be done out there, but...
Yep. And Commissioner Sievertson talked about the medical. It was about a year ago, my father's in Wisconsin, and he's in an area population 10 times the size of ours, and he has the same issues there. He has to drive over an hour to go to a veterans' hospital, and shockingly, the veterans' hospital is closed on holidays. So they changed some prescriptions for him, and very bad side effects, and it was President's Day, so he had to sit there in pain.
Yeah, you know, it all depends to, on, say you're service-connected for, so you have disabilities that you incurred while in service, and you're at 100%, or at 50%, you know, you can, you can use the VA for all of your medical care and so on, and you can also, you can use the emergency services, but then you have to call in, you got to make sure that someone calls in within 72 hours to report that you had an emergency, and then getting it paid, yeah, it's a lot of hassle with the billing and stuff like that, but hopefully it's getting better, and it will continue to get better. And it is, anybody that lives 40 miles from the nearest VA facility is entitled to be, you know, use the choice program, but it just, oh my gosh, I've sat on there myself for, or tried to help a veteran out to get his appointments and stuff, or her appointments, and it's just unbelievable, and then they expect the elderly to do something like that, and it's crazy.
Yeah, he's very involved with all the stuff and knows all the hoops, because he's a Vietnam vet, so for 40 years now, he's jumped through the hoops that he's needed to jump through, and he, with his VA there, just so you all know, my father got VA of the Year Award for 2017 for all of his contributions, so I'm sure he'll watch this video and be very proud. He had it out for us at Christmas on the table.
It's a big deal.
Yes, Commissioner Duchamp?
Yeah, I think it's a great service. I wish that we could use our facilities here. Back in, I don't know, in my younger days, I used to drive vets to the VA in Minneapolis for an hour appointment. He'd be gone for a day and a half, just for an hour, and it's...
Yep. And they, you know, they do have, we're trying to, and that's something I just really want to work on, and we did have a van, the DAV gave us a van, couldn't find any volunteer drivers. And the issue is that when the DAV gets the van, they give it to the VA, the VA has a whole bunch of, I mean, to get, to be a volunteer driver for the VA is insane. I mean, you really, it's like taking your, what is it, your CDL? Yeah, it's crazy. So I mean, even, my husband even got bumped off of it, because if you don't use your CPAT machine, you have to have like 30 days of record to show them that you're using. Yeah, it kicks a lot of people out of the volunteer...
So you can be a pilot and you can't drive a vet to appointment, huh?
Right.
Yeah.
Not in a DAV van, or a VA van. So that ended up going back to Duluth, and, I mean, we can always revisit if something ever happens that, you know, we get in that position to do that, and that's what we're trying to do, is figure out our veterans from up here and stuff, to get them to Duluth, because there are buses that go from Duluth to the VA, but they leave at like 6:00 AM in the morning or whatever, and that's crazy for our vets, so, yeah. But anyway, work in progress.
Thank you. Just have one more question.
That it?
One more question. Thank you. As you were speaking, and with the new technology with video, obviously there'd be many hoops for video, would you see that as being a helpful, helpful meaning, would you see instances where face-to-face is, may not be necessary, but, like, video is used for patients, kids, to talk to psychiatrists, et cetera, and then not have to drive there? Could you see that as being a benefit to veterans? I don't know how you jump through the hoops and make it happen, but...
Yeah, you just have to have someplace where that veteran can do that.
Right.
I mean, if they could do that, I'm sure there's, there are a lot of, you know, providers that would do that with a veteran. We try to, we had, we actually, at one greet and meet, I, some of the people from the Vet Center came up, and they do counseling and stuff, and, oh, we were all so excited, because they said they would come up and they would counsel vets and all this and that, and, yeah, they'd come up for personal appointments and everything, and we had, the senior center said they could use, you know, that office down there for that, and then it just kind of all fell apart, the, you didn't hear from the Vet Center anymore, and they went through a lot of employee changes and then lack of employees, and so it, they've never really had much of any contact since then, so. And I encourage you, this is another thing too, I guess, it just brings up, that they brought up a van one day, and parked, just parked it at the point. Well, Grand Marais, if you're not going to advertise that kind of stuff, whatever, is that, you know, in your connections with people, if people are doing something, or talking about the veterans, and, and just making me aware of that, because I'll get phone calls, I have no idea what's going on, but there's some organization or something that's doing something for veterans, but yet they don't contact the Veteran Service Office. And I think Rena had clued me in on that too, some people from higher ed, there was something going on with mental health and veterans and so on, and nobody said anything, you know, I was never contacted or anything, so she told me, and I went over there and I attended, and, you know...
So some networking, holes in our networking as well.
Right, right, yeah, so, anyway.
Thank you.
So, Pat, I was wondering, how many veterans do we have in the county?
There, when I first started, it was, and it's, my numbers come from this geographical report that they send out, there were 512, and now this last one I received, it's 458. And I don't know how accurate that is, but I know that in this last year, we've lost like 14 vets that I'm aware of. That's a lot for our county.
We just lost the oldest one, the oldest male.
Yeah, we did, I just...
103. Yeah, and then 91 unduplicated and 74, and what does unduplicated mean?
It means that I've never seen, they're different individuals. It's not like, oh, I'm meeting with the same person, you know, five, six times, whatever, these are separate vets.
And do you do greet and meet in various parts of the county, or what have you done so far?
I've done it, down at the senior center.
Okay.
I would like to get something set up, I don't know what's, you know, like Virch Grove, I would like to get something set up, so that I would go down there, maybe every two weeks, or once a month, or whatever, maybe could be, so that I could advertise for the West End vets if they wanted to come down there.
Right, we are working on some different kinds of presentations, so I'll be in touch with you about that.
Okay.
Great. All right, well, thanks so much for filling us in. Next item, we have Diane Booth.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I have a request before you this morning. In 2015 and 2016 and 2017, we asked about getting more energy-efficient light bulbs, LEDs, at the community center. We were turned down in 2015 and 2016, and 2017, we were told it would be part of the bonding piece, which did not happen. So we have had Nordic Electric come in and give us a quote to go ahead and change all of our lights all over to LEDs. The cost would be $16,000. Right now, he's coming at least once a month and changing out bulbs, which is about $1,000, $800 to $1,000 a crack. So it would probably be a lot cheaper to have him come in and do all of them at once, and at the same time, we could then receive the 25% to 50% rebate for all of the LED light bulbs through SIMPA. So that is my request, and I have talked to Brian Silence, and he agrees that that would be a good thing to do, and I had Brian talk to Brady, and there is some money in the maintenance budget to do that, so that would be my request, is that we go ahead and take care of that. The energy efficiency is a pretty big deal with those big bulbs out in that curling rink. So...
Yes, definitely. And that's for the whole building?
That would be for the whole building. All of our bulbs would be changed over to LEDs.
The curlers might be able to really see where they're going with the lights out there.
Well, they have, I think about nine of them out there that have been changed out, and I'm sure that does help. You know, you turn on the lights and it doesn't take 10 minutes for the lights to come on, those 11 anyway, or nine, I should say, yeah.
Okay, we'll open it up for discussion. Commissioner Duchamp?
Did, you get more than one bid on this?
We did not, because it's under $25,000. We, Nordic Electric does a lot of work for the county, and we've had him in there, he knows, he's been coming in to change them out periodically already, so he's certainly well-aware of the building and what it takes to do it.
No questions.
Makes sense. You know, I don't want to belabor this, but I guess I'll say this often, let's, you know, I think we do always, when we do projects, we have to always look ahead at cost savings of the future, rather than it's going to cost so much money this year, so, wise move. It makes sense, so thank you for your patience.
Commissioner Sievertson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we've waited a long time, and wise move. My only question would be, there's no, I can see we're waiting longer, would be painful. There's no benefit to waiting longer until the construction is done.
Well, we have put it off for a long time, thinking something would happen, and something would happen, and something would happen. I guess what I'm thinking is, the arena probably was not going to change, and that's the main cost. So we, and that's really where a lot of our energy costs are, so to me, it just makes sense that that, even if we would add on to the building or do something different, that's not going to change.
Good point.
And you could always take the bulbs and move them to another fixture, so, you know, I'm...
How many county employees does it take to remove the bulbs? Yeah, good point.
Maybe volunteers can do that. I mean, we do a lot of stuff with volunteers up there.
Yeah, yeah. I have no, it makes sense, thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll just make the note that the room in the budget isn't in Brian's budget in the general fund. We looked in the, he has a certain amount of room in the building fund for projects, and we thought this could fit in there, since he doesn't have anything else planned.
Okay, so we've discussed it. Would anyone like to make a motion to this?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
The lights will be on in a few days.
Well, and we'll track to see how much energy we save.
Yeah, it'll be really interesting.
Yeah. Thank you, Diane. Okay, so Brady, we're up to you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Revolving Loan Fund Committee met January 22nd. Myron was there as part of the committee. We listened to a request from the owners of the Hungry Hippie Hostel. They had, they had requested about five years, maybe not even that long, a loan to start the hostel up there, and they've paid that off since. And so this is a brand-new request to purchase and remodel Huey's Taco, and I think it was a, it was a pretty convincing presentation. It can work for some of the things that they do up at the hostel also, with requests. So in the end, the committee approved a very long subject to, partly because of our, you know, the length of time between our meetings, but, so, to approve by motion a 20-year, $70,000 loan for purchase and remodel of Huey's Taco, subject to approval of their bank loan, which we don't have yet. We will be reviewing their business pro forma, which they hadn't prepared, or at least provided to us yet, and then execution of the loan agreement, the security agreement, which Molly will be creating, the promissory note, which Kelly will create, and then authorizing the board chair and auditor treasurer to sign all documentation. the board chair and auditor treasurer to sign all documentation. And ask if there are any questions.
Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, this sounds like an exciting thing and meets the criteria of the revolving loan fund. I just had one question, because I know the issue of whether, whether there will be employees added is, is a, is an economic, like, criteria for the revolving loan fund, is that, so they will be adding employees who are already existing?
Yes, they're planning, yeah. They definitely are planning to add, I can't remember the number in front of me right now.
Well, I think, you know, toll defense fund, they were going to get into some catering business, so that, you know, that that itself will.
To them, some to them, to themselves at their other site and things like that, so it was an expansion idea.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else, Commissioner Bersh?.
No, I, I think it's great, they have a good record with us, and they added jobs, and I think, you know, starting a new business, it's going to provide for a broader, you know, menu of services, and so this is ideal for our future.
Commissioner Duker?
It's always good when we have an applicant who's already utilized the loan fund and paid it back, is always helpful. I hope that the revolving loan committee will take a look at the requirements. I too have questions about the applicant who was denied primarily because they want to create new jobs. I know that the services that that individual provides maintains jobs for other businesses, so it's kind of hard to put it together, and I know that we have given two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to a business that did not actually add staffing as they thought they would, so that's a hard criteria to fit, but I know you've been doing this for twenty-some years, and it's worked out for the most part, but it's unfortunate that we couldn't help out other ones.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I, I think, yeah, your point is well taken, but there was other information that came forward.
But all we get is this.
Well, I'm explaining it now, that there were other sources for this loan. So, and with our amount of money that we had left, so there was other information involved there, but I, I think we'd have given it more serious consideration if there weren't other opportunities for that financing.
Yeah, it was clear that that there were, and then we have to, we have to really be careful and prioritize now, because we're very short on funds. We have plenty for this, but if we get a rush like we did last year with three or four other loans, you really have to look at who's providing the greatest benefit.
Commissioner DeChamp, do you have a question?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, but I do have a problem with the one right above there.
The reason why we have loan funds.
Yeah.
With the late payment, so we've.
I think that's something that needs to be, looking to have been taken care of.
Good point.
When, when someone is, that's the only serious late one we have right now, and we have two, two members of the committee who are making personal contacts first, before we take it to Molly and start any kind of action, but, so we're waiting to see if we get any results from that, so.
Just a question coming from that, so, and we do have a policy, like, how long default before we start the process?
Yeah, first they start incurring penalties, so each other's payments is incurring a ten percent late fee, and then, once they're, once they are late enough, which isn't, they've passed that long ago, we can start taking, we can start taking action, but, but the action is, is probably to force someone into bankruptcy or something like that, and we'd, we want to help them, encourage them, and make the business go, that's the, that's the better result.
Okay, so, then if we've discussed everything, we need to entertain a motion.
I so move.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So we've approved a motion for a twenty-year, seventy-thousand-dollar loan for purchase and remodel Huey's Taco, subject to approval of bank no, loan, and a few other things that need to be sorted out, okay? Very good.
Seven B was the add-on I requested. It's, it's very simple, if you look, there's two sides to this, and the Vanadad Trail Association, we approved their loan back in October, but they weren't asking for the money yet, so now they're close, and they're asking for the documentation, but had not put the stipulation on there that authorizing the board chair and the auditor treasurer to sign the documents, so I'm just asking to, something that could have been added back in October, so if you approve that now, then we can sign the documentation when it's ready.
Commissioner DeChamp, any questions, comments?
No.
Commissioner Duker?
No questions.
Okay.
No questions, and I would make the motion to approve the authorization for the board chair and auditor treasurer to execute all loan documents for the Vanadad Trail Association for the four, forty-five-hundred-dollar loan.
Support.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes for that. Great. Anybody need a quick break?
I do.
Okay. Two or five-minute break.
Good. I'm still.
Wow, I thought maybe it was me. Oh, you're the culprit. Oh, you're not, who is it?
I know.
I feel a little diligence. Anyway, I'll wait till I review.
I think something bad was back in my mind this morning. I didn't look, so I feel guilty. Now you're guilty, baby, that's okay.
You're going to make us starve. Luckily I brought a binocular.
See that one?
I didn't.
Yeah, what are you doing? Oh, that jeep thing there, that's coming, I think there's maxima people.
You know, there's a lot of pushback on it, but I can actually, I can see a lot of good come from that, actually. Me and that group that's going to beat the crap out of the trails is always going to be there. But I think, I think it, it opens this corridor almost like the, like the Lake Spear hiking trail, only that, you know, it's going to be made up, or it's like, we all get together and be, be all color.
I think that's in the fall time, too, they start pricking our woods and, you know, they're riding around with rifles, you know.
Yeah, but, but part of the, you know, part of the thing that interests me, too, is the path it took, and it went a little red, like, it's almost just outside of Maine. It's quite, that'd be quite interior, and you'd see a lot of stuff.
I think it's very, it's very, it's a lot of hunters, I just kind of, oh, you should try the hunting.
Which is good, but yesterday I didn't have time, so I was just.
True.
Well, that's, I think it's, that's why it's, I got stuff that, I'm trying to make up, double badge, freeze ball, trail.
I mean.
I look at it as kind of an opportunity, it's inspiring a lot of people, but, like they say, only take one, they're running for everything.
Yeah, but there's enforcement, I just think of, it's, there's a bunch of, I think, one thing, yeah, there's a lot of things.
Open one, tweet one, fair enough, pretty soon you're going to trade it all.
Well, you just answer your own question.
Yeah.
I know, I said I didn't help with it.
Well, so.
I'm sitting around the corner.
Why is that?
He said he was so.
This is for Sam.
And Steve Bobo, more.
Why so?
He was looking for your business, wasn't he, sure?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's come a long way, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think I mean.
Yes, okay.
I'm going to go here.
Was this supposed to be treats?
No.
I didn't even look at the list.
I posted a list yesterday.
A new list?
There wasn't a list up there, I posted the list yesterday.
Well, I had it, it's been on my refrigerator for a while.
Well, it's not, it's the same one, it just hasn't been posted there, which is where I find it.
Well, whoever's the last of the month will have to remind them. Not that we're starving. I should speak for myself. Okay, is everybody ready?
Nope.
Okay, I gotta grab, grab the right papers. Yeah.
Okay.
I would only ever have to do that with my sister.
Use boxes of cereal.
Yeah.
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 If I'm one of my staff.
Well, there's a couple chairs over there, you could switch sometime, but then other people come in and they switch.
Just keep getting lower and lower.
Okay, here we go. Call the meeting back to order again, and we'll move on to Jeff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item then that I have today has been a long time coming, and it's to approve the shared service agreement for engineering services between Cook and Lake County for the professional engineering services of Kristen Foster. This agreement has been reviewed by the Commissioner Bersh and the Commissioner DeShaw, as the people that were involved in the search committee. It's been reviewed by Cook County Attorney Hicken and by Lake County Attorney, and, and then reviewed in conference with Matt Holliston, Lake County Administrator, and myself, and Commissioner Severson, or Severson was involved in the conversation with Commissioner Spay and others down at Lake County in the development of this agreement, so the high points are that we will be sharing the services of Kristen Foster at approximately twenty to twenty-five hours a week, half her time. She will be at least two days a week in Cook County, and, and available to our staff on the days that she's in Lake County via telephone, text, and email. That the legal, or not the legal, the financial components of the, of the contract I've explained would, if we hired an engineer, fully qualified engineer, it would be largely at the top of the scale of the pay wage, of the pay, pay scale for that position. With that pay and benefits and professional development, if we had, we would have budgeted about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year for a professional engineer, and this contract calls for a first-year expense of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, which of course will be prorated for the fact that we're starting halfway through February and not, not on January first. And the components of that are identified in the appendix, but I want to review those so that everybody has an opportunity to understand that, is that we'll take the actual wages and benefits and taxes and split those fifty-fifty with Lake County. The professional development, we'll split fifty-fifty with Lake County, and then there are two items that are additional costs for us, and one of those are an allocation for transportation, which is listed in there as twelve thousand dollars a year, and we talked about doing that as a lump sum, rather than, than cost accounting that on a weekly basis or a monthly basis, and we'll adjust that periodically if it's necessary. And the final element in that cost is the indirect cost, the incidental costs, listed at twenty-four thousand dollars and change, and that, when Matt and I reviewed that, that is, both of us understanding that having a shared, shared engineer means that both of us are going to have additional administrative responsibilities in the oversight and the management of, of the highway department. Primarily for him, it means that he's going to have to spend more time with his staff than he has previously, because he won't have a full-time engineer. For us, one of the primary provisions is that upon recommendation of MCIT best practices and, and review and recommendation of Attorney Hicken, is that we not have a Lake County employee directly responsible for the supervision or discipline of, of any Cook County staff. So effectively, administratively, I will, I will supervise and, and evaluate the, the three positions that would directly report to the engineer, in conjunction with, of course, input from Kristen Foster. So those are essentially the terms of the agreement. The term, the agreement is for the balance of 2018 and 2019, with the thought of renewing it for the following two years, which would be concurrent with the balance of, of Kristen's current appointment, and as, as long as everything is moving forward, at that point, we would reappoint for the reappointment period on a four-year basis thereafter. The contract allows either party to, to terminate, the, the contract also terminates if Kristen Foster is no longer the named engineer for Lake County. It does also call for a, a committee comprised of commissioners and administrators from both counties to make sure that we're on track, to have a successful contract, and that things are going well. And then, of course, this is all really largely possible, because in a pinch last year, when we had Kristen in Lake County help us out with our County Seven project, all of the staff have a great deal of respect for Kristen, her integrity and her level of professionalism she displays as an engineer, so I make this recommendation as being the best way for us to move forward and make some plans and, and carry forward with our, our planned improvements in the highway department.
So we will open this up for some discussion. Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just to be clear, I'm understanding that the salary is split in half, and their fringe and benefits split in half, and their added communication fees due to the distance and, and mileage, of course. So this indirect cost based on salary and fringe, does that go, that, that is what stays in?
in the oversight and the management of, of the highway department. Primarily for him, it means that he's going to have to spend more time with his staff than he has previously because he won't have a full-time engineer. For us, one of the primary provisions is that upon recommendation of MCIT best practices and, and review and recommendation of Attorney Hicken, is that we not have a Lake County employee directly responsible for the supervision or discipline of, of any Cook County staff. So, effectively, administratively, I will, I will supervise and, and evaluate the, the three positions that would directly report to the engineer in conjunction with, of course, input from Kristen Foster. So, those are essentially the terms of the agreement. The term, the agreement is for the balance of 2018 and 2019 with the thought of renewing it for the following two years, which would be concurrent with the balance of, of Kristen's current appointment. And as, as long as everything is moving forward, at that point, we would reappoint for the reappointment period on a four-year basis thereafter. The contract allows either party to, to terminate. The contract also terminates if Kristen Foster is no longer the named engineer for Lake County. It does also call for a committee comprised of commissioners and administrators from both counties to make sure that we're on track to have a successful contract and that things are going well. And then, of course, this is all really largely possible because in a pinch last year, when we had Kristen and Lake County help us out with our County Seven project, all of the staff have a great deal of respect for Kristen, her integrity and her level of professionalism she displays as an engineer. So, I make this recommendation as being the best way for us to move forward and make some plans and, and carry forward with our, our planned improvements in the highway department.
So, we will open this up for some discussion. Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, just to be clear, I'm understanding that the salary is split in half and their fringe and benefits split in half. And their added communication fees due to distance and, and mileage, of course. So, this indirect cost based on salary and fringe, does that go, that, that is what stays in the budget for other costs that we incur? Or does that go directly to this position?
So.
It's twenty-four thousand.
So, thanks for clarifying that. So, that twenty-four thousand, add half of the labor and the benefits and the taxes and half of the professional development. And then add the twelve thousand and the twenty-four thousand, and then divide it by twelve, and that shows the monthly payment of ninety-three thirty-nine is what our contract would be with Lake County for those services.
So, the total of one twelve is divided by twelve?
Divided by twelve, correct.
Okay. So, it all goes into this position?
It all goes into this position.
Okay.
Another way of representing that is, is our savings for the shared service agreement would be about forty-seven thousand dollars.
That's really helpful.
And that's, and, and that's important.
Commissioner Bershaim?
Well, I was involved in this as well as Commissioner Dusha. I want to really thank our county administrator, Mr. Cadwell, for a lengthy process. He had first proposed this as our initial way to proceed, but in getting together and some interviews, some of the people thought it would be best to get a full-time engineer. So, you know, we explored that, and that just didn't work out. We couldn't find a qualification. So, I think we did a very thorough and, you know, and ended up where we were supposed to be maybe in the beginning, but we did want to explore that other option based upon, especially from my perspective, some of the staff in our highway department. So, a job well done. And as he mentioned too, you know, I want to commend him for working with the highway department staff in this whole process. He's been going over there weekly and, and then it will have more on his plate supervising these three positions. But that's a real benefit to having a county administrator. There's just so many benefits. Some people have raised some issues. What is the benefit? Well, here's another, you know, fifty thousand dollars worth of something that's coming down the pipe just because we have a county administrator just considering one area of our responsibility as a county. So, a job well done, Mr. Cadwell. Thank you. And I certainly approve it. Then after we take action, do we appoint two representatives from our board to do this then, or should we just do that later?
Commissioner Bershaim, that would be a very, a very appropriate time to make that appointment.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner DuKirk?
When I was elected, Russell and Dave took me on drives through the county to look at situations and issues, which thankfully I can say in my sixth year here, those have been addressed. I would very much, I know it's only two days a week and she has a lot on her plate, but I would like to take a drive on mainly the Gunflint Trail, also Devil Track and eighteen, because eighteen is set to be done in eighteen, hopefully.
Eighteen and eighteen.
Nope, getting moved. Okay, that's fine. They've been waiting a long time. As it is, they'll wait another year. Especially with the comments made this morning during the meeting, I am looking forward to having an engineer that is working well with our staff and it seems is open to ideas, not that the past ones weren't. I'm not saying that our past engineer was not. Just make that clear. And so, if that could be set up either through you, Jeff, or if she wants to contact me directly, and I don't have a problem driving it in the winter because, you know, those big signs are more visible in the winter because they stand out. And that's all I have. I'm glad that we were able to figure this out, and a big thank you to Lake County. And maybe we should, I know we like sending them cards of thanks, but maybe we should send them another one for working this all out. And the members of this board, Jan, Byron, Bobby, that all put your time and effort into making this happen.
Yeah, I think this is going to be a good deal. This is kind of what I was pushing for in a way. And I think it's going to work out good for both of us. She's really open to talk too, and we'll see where she goes. We had some projects up on the reservation this summer, and we're going to have some more projects, so we'll be able to see. Get her working with the BIA on some projects too, so I'm excited.
Me, are we going to address now that she's here? I know it's, she's not exactly here. We've had a lot of staff doing extra. Are we going to look into that deeper? Filling in the gaps that we've had between Russ and Dave?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner DuKirk. So, we, we've addressed some of that in that we've named Charlie Sawyer as the general foreman. So, we've taken him from his out-of-class position and, and put him in a position. You've approved the posting of the position of the maintenance supervisor, so we're actively soliciting for that. We have posted and we will be interviewing on Tuesday for the vacancy in the engineering tech position. And as soon as she comes on board, we're going to have a conversation about the assistant engineer versus a fourth engineering tech and bring a recommendation to the board to how to, how to address that spot in our, in our staff over there. And at the personnel committee meeting this afternoon, we're going to be addressing the, the job description for Lisa Sorley as the highway road and bridge accountant. So, we will be addressing and backfilling all those positions, and there's only a few questions that we want to make sure that Kristen Foster is available to consult on before we move forward.
Any more discussion? So, I'm ready to hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, we've approved the share contract agreement between Lake County and Cook County. And I guess the other thing probably we just need to be aware of that this will be reviewed in December. Is that correct?
Were there two commissioners in part of that?
Yes, so we, I had.
Heidi made the motion.
No, you.
That's a separate motion.
Okay, I just want to be clear.
Yep, I know where you're going.
Okay, sorry.
And just the fact that we would review the job in December?
Madam, Madam Chair, the, the review committee's responsibility will be to make the recommendation to renew this agreement and make sure that we're on task to be able to, to make a recommendation to renew this agreement as needed. So, I think the appropriate thing, as Commissioner Bershaim mentioned, is to identify two of commissioners to serve on that committee as, as identified in the contract.
Okay.
How often will that committee meet?
Quarterly at most. There may be opportunities electronically where they would receive updates.
I can handle that. I'll volunteer.
So, we have two names.
We have to do a motion, I believe.
Okay, shall we do a motion on it?
I think that would be best.
Okay, so I'll hear a motion on the volunteers of Commissioner DuKirk and Dusha to serve on that committee.
I'll support.
Do I hear a second?
I support it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We assumed that you made the motion and then.
Okay.
Was that what you intended?
Well, I heard her say.
Yes.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye. Sorry.
Stacy, are you okay?
So, we've got Janine and Byron.
Okay, all right. So, next item, Mr. Administrator.
Madam Chair, at the last couple of meetings, we've had conversations about our membership in NACO and our participation in, in NACO events. And, and we've, we've talked about establishing a policy. It was also a good opportunity for us to review our out-of-state travel policy. And so, the information in the board pack identifies three basic questions that I think, that I think we would want to resolve and some one that we would probably want to take action on. We currently have in our handbook and in, by resolution, establish a policy consistent with the state, state auditor's office in addressing how we decide when we're going to travel out of state. So, I, I think our policies are sufficient there. The ones that I included in the packet are just excerpts to show that the reference that we have those. Commissioner Bershaim pointed out, we seem to be missing a second page, and my intention was not just to demonstrate that we have a resolution that addresses this. So, I, I think we're, we're okay on that point. The second point is, is that in the budgetary process this year, we identified approximately three thousand dollars above what we had for last year, which we thought would, could potentially be to address costs related to travel to NACO in 2018. So, just from that point of view, that's what we've set aside for that. And then, and then I included some information regarding NACO and the legislative or their policy committees and participation in that. And we, we had a brief conversation this week about taking a look at the AMC legislative platform and the Cook County legislative platform as a subset of that and making sure that, that we take a look at the NACO policy platforms and that we're putting our energies into NACO in a way that are consistent with our AMC participation and our local participation. So, basically, I think what we should plan to do is to identify how we're going to select our NACO representatives. And then I think it would be appropriate to amend our commissioner assignment sheet to represent that. And I know that there are, there are places where it's, it's somebody who's named. In other places, it's named as the chair or the vice chair or an alternate. And I think that that's completely up to this board to determine how it is. They want to organize themselves that way. But if we make that decision and we append it to the commissioner assignments, then it'll be reviewed every year, and we'll have an opportunity to talk about this. And if we identify that as something we're going to be participating in, it's something we'll consider in the budgeting process going forward as well.
Okay, so, let's start the discussion on what we've read and what we have before us. For Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate the consideration of this issue. I think it's a really important organization that we participate in. And it's an important process in determining who goes. So, I'm assuming that our issues will not be changing quickly. I mean, Pilt is always going to be with us. And so, I like that the, I prefer that we make the representation based on our issues and what we want to be represented. And if there was a, you know, the board chair could be one of the criteria, right, one of the criteria. I would also like there to be other criteria because I think our procedure for choosing board chair does not always align with the NACO criteria. So, I wouldn't want the board chair to be the only criteria. But that's sort of my two cents. And so, the issues to me are Pilt. And I think our issues in the, like, policy steering committees might be different than my personal ones. But, I mean, from what I gathered in the last ten years serving in committees, et cetera, the community economic and workforce development seems to be the issue that is key from all the other organizations that I've participated in. I think, yeah, environment, energy, and land use, we've kind of got that going on. We don't have a lot that we can control with that right now. Whereas, community economic and workforce development is kind of critical to our overall well-being in the future. So, I see it as, our two issues are Pilt and community economic workforce development. And I would like the criteria be the board chair, but more than the board chair. Those are my two cents. So, I'd almost like to see it to be an application process, you know, in the future.
Okay, Commissioner Bershaim?
Well, I think that it's important that we have someone there. And I think Commissioner Severson mentioned two areas that are really important to our county. And I think that they, whoever goes, whether it's the chair or anyone else, I think we need someone there that can represent this. So, I, I think that whether it's your interest or not or past experience, that if we send someone to NACO, there should be certain expectations in which they participate at the national level. So, you know, there also may be topics some years that would be very pertinent to us. So, I think there needs to be some degree of flexibility in that process. Maybe we could just have a discussion, you know, before we appoint someone each year. Or we could, you know, I, the chair, vice chair makes a lot of sense, but if there's a better way of doing this, I'd certainly be open to that as a commissioner. But I think that it would have to be, you know, quite logical and set on some criteria rather than someone's interest. So, that's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner DuKirk?
So, Julie, did you say that the NACO year runs July to July?
I would say, you know, the one in Ohio was the prerequisite to set forth legislative concerns then in March, yes.
Okay, I think we need to have information on when they run. I don't have a problem with it being chair and vice chair as the backup, but if their fiscal year, however you do it, how they decide what they're voting on doesn't run on our annual year, then it doesn't make sense for the chair because we change it in January. So, they would not be prepared for a March meeting. I think that a better use of our money, if we've got three thousand set aside, there are ten committees with NACO. Just like AMC, we do all the work, and this is where I'm getting at, the year before. We do all the work setting up the legislative content and what they're going to vote on. Any commissioner can bring our ideas forward at the March meeting in Washington, DC and make the vote. I think that we need to have a person on one of these committees and making sure that they are fighting for us the entire year up until it goes to Washington and the final vote is made. It's ten committees, which seems daunting, but I think that some of these, we can just take off the list immediately because we know we have coverage. I agree with Commissioner Severson on community economic workforce and development. My only hesitation on that is that our chamber has been very effective in legislative action and getting that forward. Public lands is a big one. I know Commissioner Sorley, you're very interested in human services and education. And we seem to be a little silent on that, so maybe that would be the best one. And Lake County's Chair Commissioners Faye has been on the public land committee with NACO for several years, but he has asked me numerous times in the past if I would also be on that committee with him to have a second voice from our area. So, that is part of why I ask that we have this conversation with other commissioners. And maybe we do that when we're down at AMC and find out where our resources are best put. I would rather see that travel and expense put into a commissioner attending a committee. And I know that's an application process to be on the committee, but there are ten of them. So, I would rather see a commissioner going to the committee meetings rather than the annual meeting because I think that that will be more effective use of our money. And I'm done.
Yeah, I'm looking at the committees here, and I think quite a few of them. I don't know, I got one, two, three, four, five of them that I can see on there that are important to the county. And I think we just need to kind of get them down and see where. I'm on the first page. But I think, do think it's very important to do go to. That's all I got.
Okay.
So, I would like to get the information to get us an application. I don't know if we decide now which committee. I know you've got five. But I think we need to find out which committee has an opening. If it's one of the ones that we choose as a group and see if we can't get on the competency committee. And I know Julie Ring has that information.
Just, Madam Chair, thank you. My understanding, it's just a point of clarification, is that the meeting that you went to last summer was setting the stage for the one you're going to now. So, it seems to me that, you know, we have to decide, is that, is that an important part of this decision? Or do we have, you know, someone down there on land services in the summer going to those meetings? meetings, and then someone else goes to economic development, and is that the best use of our plan? So I think we have to be careful about that, you know, if at all possible, it would appear that whoever goes in the summer, whether that's the same person or not that goes, it would be a commitment from us that we continue that work. Otherwise, you're just, it's a personal thing, and we're applying, you know, I, I think the structure of this organization has to be considered so that we can use it for our benefit.
Well, yes, I did go to the health, health services, and it was very much eye-opening, and right now, we do not, in our area, have a huge opioid situation, and that's what they discussed a lot about. We have some, I'm not saying we don't, but for my personal requirement would be to work more with PILT, because I think that's more appropriate right now in land and the public lands. So, I would say that if you would decide not to do anything today, I think you're pretty much cutting yourself off for any participation now, because the timeline for registration and finding a place to stay out in Washington DC is about 10 days away. So, the discussion could be, put it off and start all over next year, because it seems that there's a difference of opinion about the priorities of the committees, who's to go, and when. So, I think that's what we need to decide. Commissioner Duker?
The application for the committee says it's decided in July. And then I'm confused, because I thought our last conversation was that we budgeted to attend one meeting, and that it would be beneficial to go to the legislative one, but now it sounds like you're saying it's beneficial to go to both, because the work is done in July, and then, or did I misunderstand you? Because what Ginny went to last year was the conference that was out of town in July. So now are we saying that you need to go to both of those meetings to be effective?
Well, I would say that it's, it's a continuation, just like our AMC, we go to district meetings, and then we go on to, you know, to the state meeting, just as we are going to in a couple weeks, going to go to our first legislative session, which, you know, is sort of the ending of all of our work that we have done in the district and at the state meeting. Now we'll meet some of our legislators and senators and have a talk with them, just as this particular thing is going out to talk to legislators out there, which is a half, a day and a half of doing that.
Right, and we have a legislative conference every single year.
Yeah.
But we, we don't just do the district meetings, we do committee meetings. There's five at AMC, and that's where all the decision-making is done, is in the steering committees, and then we bring it forward at the annual meetings. And that's where I'm thinking we're more effective, because you will be involved in the original decision-making and platform, rather than just a vote at the end of it.
Okay. Any other thoughts where you want this to go?
Well, I think, you know, it sounds like whoever goes in the summer, and whoever goes, you know, now in the spring, or that, that fine, because they, they run in the fiscal year, that whether it's the same person or not, we should be committed to be involved in the same process. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So it doesn't have to necessarily be the same person, but it seems like it's logical that it could. I think we have an immediate concern here now to get someone to go, and who should that be? And then, I think I said this before, then set policy, maybe later or whatever, until we have more time with this, but it, I think that, you know, it's difficult, from what I'm hearing, everyone, to say that we can come to some kind of agreement with some kind of policy, so maybe we have to get a committee or something to work on that, because I don't know, you know, based upon my experience, sometimes we don't come to the best decisions when we, we try to do these things too quickly.
Well, in our policy, you know, this dates back to 2006, should have been reviewed every year. We haven't done one thing about it for out-of-state travel. So this is what, this is the beginning now, what we need to do. Needs to be reviewed every January, would we, you know, take our, on different committees and boards?
Yeah, I just have a question. So, the structure looks like this, there are committees that meet throughout the year somewhere. So there's, so really, to be effective in this organization, we, we would need to participate in those committees. So, that's one area of travel to be considered for budgeting. And then there's attending the legislative session, which happens February or March, and then there's the summer. Is that the whole, is that like the full structure of how this works?
It is.
In which case, I think it's a, it's bigger, of course, than just this one meeting, but it's also just this one, that we're, that we're up against the wall today.
Well, you know, I was talking to Julie, and Julie said, nobody's coming from your county. I mean, this goes back, like, last year. Nobody's come from your county to be on any committee. And I said, no, and I think it's important, let's see what I can do about it. So at that time, she said, well, the health committee is open. That's all we said. I didn't apply for anything, I didn't go to any meetings, I didn't do anything. She just said, get the ball rolling, because you have nobody there for a long time. So I did. I got the ball rolling, I went. So here we are, trying to figure out the present policy and the future policy.
And it's the same discussion Julie had with me. It's the same discussion we had when there was an opening on the public lands committee, we just haven't budgeted for it. So now we budgeted for it, and we need to, we all need to be educated on what it is and what the committees are and what our involvement needs to be. And it shouldn't be just because there's an opening, you should fill it.
Yeah, because it should meet our, our priorities, you know, and that, you know, we need to determine as a group. And then out of that conversation comes the representation.
So I don't know if we can set up time when we're at this legislative conference to talk to Rich and talk to Julie, all of us. I know none of us, all of us can make it to that, but I think that we need to have a better understanding of where we're going to have the most impact. I mean, that's a lot of money and a lot of time, and all of us talk about the time that we invest as it is into these different committees, and I think that we need to get the most bang for our buck.
Yeah, this is a really important one.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll table it?
Yeah, but I don't want it to disappear.
Well, it will, because your timeline for registering and all that is getting pretty slim.
Just for this in March, but we need to be involved in this, and we budgeted for it. That's what I'm saying, we can't just let it go, because we're not going in March. We need to make sure we figure out what committees have openings, get on the waiting list or whatever, get the application filled out, find out who's going to do it, who has the time. I mean, maybe we get from Julie when these committees meet. You know, do they meet once a year, twice a year? If we can meet from the ITV room, I think we need to move forward, because it hasn't been decided.
That since '06? Okay, so.
No, I think, we have the money budgeted to send someone now, in March, correct?
We have money, we have additional money budgeted that was intended to be for NACO, not necessarily the legislative conference, and that's what we're discussing. Is that where it should be spent, or should it be spent on committee travel?
Well, committee travel equals then going for the legislature. You don't just go to the committees and then other people go. That's the whole point of going to committee, I think.
That's what we do at AMC. Not everyone can attend the annual conference and vote, but they do all the work all year long. And maybe there's enough money in the budget to do.
But we're, we're having funding for that, no.
Well, maybe there's enough money in the budget to do the committee work and attend at least one of the meetings. That's what I'm, what I would like to know.
I guess that my, my understanding is, and I could be wrong, is that if anyone wants to go to St. Paul or wherever they happen to go to meetings, we have that provided for in our current structure.
We have it in the past.
We're talking here about travel out-of-state for NACO.
No, we're talking about the whole NACO package, and what our involvement is in the entire process.
Right, we have $3,000 for travel in the budget for 2018 for NACO travel.
For additional travel that we have attended in the past.
Which doesn't include any AMC.
Right.
So the only thing that's been.
And there has been a commissioner attending NACO after 2006, from here.
Was it, there was?
Bob Glenn McWan and Jim Johnson won.
Yeah. I think he went in '09.
Okay, so we'll table it?
I mean, I think, sorry, tabling it makes sense, but I agree that we want to reach a decision, and we want to come up with a plan. And we all, I'm hearing that we all feel it's the, it's a really good thing for us to be involved in. I think what we're hedging on is how to best utilize our, how to get the most impact from our participation in it from a budget perspective, and from just being efficient and effective, how do we get the most out of this organization and influence the, and I think, you know, we're pretty well in agreement that PILT is the number one, so I don't think any of us would disagree with that. But that has not been said. So it makes sense to me that we, yeah, tabling it does not mean, you know, we're just not going to talk about it, but we need to come up with a plan for it.
Yeah. Jeff, can you get a list of what committees are open with NACO that we can join?
Yeah, I can do that. I think, we still have the, we still have the standing question about whether or not somebody's going to attend the legislative conference in Washington DC.
Right.
And I just bring that point up.
Yeah, and, and I think, if I could, I would like to say that I think we still have two issues. We should, you know, send someone to this conference or not, and then form some kind of committee or refer to Cal to try to figure out what are the sort of presumed complexities of this whole thing. And I think mixing those two decisions together, we're missing something, especially if we have the money budgeted for it. So I'm going to move that we send our chair to, you know, this legislative conference, because we have the money budgeted for it, and commence with some kind of form of study in how we're going to deal with this in the future.
So that's your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Um.
Any more discussion?
That was really vague. What does that cover? Does that cover flight, travel, mileage?
Yes.
Everything?
That's what we budgeted.
But in the past, the request was just to cover the registration, so that's why I want clarification of what's covered.
Yeah, okay, so, no, I would say that the expenses should be covered according to the policy, out-of-state travel.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Opposed.
Sure. It's fine with, it's fine with me.
You're on the, on the board.
I'm good with it.
Okay.
Yes.
So we need to proceed with some more details about this in the future?
Absolutely.
To have some defined committee involvement and, and see to it that what is important from our county perspective, that it be carried through our AMC and the committees and all of that.
I think we talked the last meeting or the meeting before, if you're going on behalf of the county, it should be paid for by the county, so.
And that, and then maybe that, I don't know if there'll be time, but that we would specifically set your priorities to attend before you go. That would be good.
Well, just as we've been, right, just as we've been asked to think about our priorities when we meet with our legislatures. You know, we're going to be spending at least a half a day, quarter of a day over there, and so we're going to have a little introduction to that, but we need to think about what's important when we meet with senators. I don't know how they're going to set up yet, but however, we need to come up with some things that we want to discuss with them, too. And one of the things that I was impressed with Representative Eklund was that he said, if you have a certain issue, say, he said, I know that I have an issue, I work really hard for that, and you know that I do that, but go to another representative or senator in another district or another county to say, we are on the same path with you, how could we work together, and what are your thoughts? So it isn't, you know, just our own reps, too. We need to find out who does what on what committee when we go down to St. Paul. So administrator update?
Madam Chair, the only thing I would, I would bring up is a reminder of the AMC Legislative Conference, beginning February 27th through March 1st, in that I believe anybody who's planning on going has already made arrangements through, through Julie. And then a reminder that I will be out of the office February 22nd through March 15th. I'll miss two meetings at that point in time, but I believe both Brady Powers and Attorney Hickon will be available in my absence, and I will have my cell phone with me, so. Email will probably be the best way to reach me if, if I'm needed to be reached, and Julie will know how to get ahold of me, too.
Okay, anything else?
I will also not be attending the legislative conference, just so, so you all know.
Okay. So we'll move on to employee concerns. Commissioner Concerns.
Hi.
Anybody? Yes? Okay.
Jeff Cadwell and I have been meeting with George Wilks. As you recall, he came to our board meeting requesting that we pass a resolution regarding climate change. And so we did a follow-up meeting with him, and then since that, had another meeting and just this past week. And so, and please feel to offer your perspective or comments on this as well, Mr. Cadwell, but in meeting with him, I think that we were somewhat consistent, saying that we're a little concerned about a resolution. Unfortunately, maybe, climate change has become politicized, and I think we, as counties, should not get into political discussions, we're nonpartisan. And our primary concerns are, you know, highway, public safety, and so forth, and it's, and health and human services. So, has, you know, will that relate to these areas in the future? I think it will. So to say that we're not going to, you know, consider anything to do with this topic at all would be not in the county's best interest. So it seems logical that we pursue this to some extent, but not go down the route area of a resolution, because with resolutions, we're held accountable for them, they're the law of the action. I'm dealing with, in Ann Club, a resolution that was made in 2010, you know, and is that the current thing? And I think that we had pointed out as well that, you know, we can be, we have to be careful about our resolutions, because we can be held accountable for some, some of those things as we go in our budgetary process and so forth. So, I think, I would, you know, as a commissioner, feel far more comfortable that we really be cautious about resolutions and that, that they be more pertinent to maybe supporting a certain event or year, or some general things, but not to get specific such as this. The city is taking some action by having a climate action specialist or an employee through granted funds, and they're meeting today at noon. And I know I have let Mr. Wilks know that I will attend this meeting at noon today, and I think Administrator Cadwell's going to do the same, so that we would be apprised about how they're going, and maybe there's some way we can look at this in the future. I, I would like to think, but I'm really speaking out of, you know, any kind of authority or out of place and say that this might have something to do with economic development, but I think that would be premature to say that's, but that's one avenue we could go. We also could look at if we wanted to get involved in such a thing, because it'd be in our best interest for our community and for us as a county, especially dealing with highway, you know, safety and human services, that we maybe look at this as possibly, you know, nondiscretionary funding kind of issue, to maybe get into a project with the city. But that's my very preliminary thinking, and, but I think, at least as a commissioner, I wanted the rest of you to know that, you know, I, I will be attending a meeting as well as Mr. Cadwell at noon today with the city. Just, just find out what's going on. Anything that you want to add to that?
No, Commissioner, I think that was a good, a good summary. I, I kind of summarized our responsibilities as public safety, public transportation, and...
Uh, I, I kind of summarized our responsibilities as public safety, public transportation, and, uh, and, and other, and, and transportation is our primary responsibilities, and, um, advocacy for, um, for policy change at the, at the federal level, outside of those three issues, does not really fall within the guidelines and responsibilities of a county. So the things that we would really wanna endorse, the things that are gonna be best practices, and are gonna increase efficiencies, and, and provide more streamlined services, and better resource management, but those best practices are already built into our process. So, um, we'll participate, we're gonna, we're gonna continue to be engaged in this conversation, but until we find a, a way where the, the board can actually take an action that makes sense, and can be supported, and, and carry the whole community forward, I'd, I'd be very hesitant to, I, I agree with Commissioner Bursch, I'm being hesitant to put together, uh, or adopt some sort of a resolution that would then potentially put restrictions on the types of trucks that we buy for the highway department, or specify the types of trucks that we would buy in the highway department. Um, and I'm, so I'm very concerned about putting any limitations on that.
Okay. Any other meetings to note? Yes?
There was a question about the term for members on the EDA. The EDA was created out of legislative action, since they have some limited, um, taxing authority. It's a legislative action that's set in at six years. So the EDA and the county board cannot change that without legislative action. So that is why it's six years.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as far as the meeting updates, um, next week, um, there's a possibility, so it should be put in here that there's not a formal meeting, but next week on, on Tuesday, the 20th, there's a possibility that several of us will be up at the school for the DNR presentation. If you got, if all of you got the border-to-border truck route, um, they're gonna be there, and I think it'd be important for us to be there, um, which then, because that's also the committee of the whole, which starts at 5:00, um, I think probably, I will announce that we'll keep that to about an hour, so that we can go up to the school and hear that presentation. And then, let's see, is there another meeting? Oh, well, then going to the legislature. So can we combine both the 20th and the 27th into, um, the possibility that there'd be a quorum at each one of those meetings? Or do we have to go a week at a time?
No, we can, we can post that on the...
Okay, so let's post it then through February.
Madam Chair, I would just make one clarification. It's the border-to-border, border, border trail, it's not a truck route.
That's what it says on the line.
It's a, it's a, it's a trail.
Right, I know, but that...
It's an ATV trail, isn't it?
It's, it's a multi-use trail, it's a designation, but...
So I think it would be good for us to get all the details there. So we'll put that in then for the next two meetings. Okay. Anything else? Concerns? Um, I'll just bring up the idea about our, uh, computer. I talked to Rena, and, um, I do use my computer. I don't bring it here, because I'm a paper person, and I like to write on and scribble, and I can't do that on the computer. So I will see about maybe just upgrading the one I have. I've had it for three years. I don't really see anything wrong with it, other than it needs to be upgraded. So I will see, um, Kirk about that. So I think we can, it was hard for me, because I was an apple girl, so it was hard for me to come on, do this new surface, but I figured it out, and, and...
You become superficial, huh?
Yes, I do, I do. And personally, I'll just go ahead and see if I can get it upgraded, not ask for a new one, so. And probably all of us can handle it however we want on that. Okay, anything else?
On that, Jeff, on, uh, that letter from 1854, did you pass that on to planning? I talked to Sunny yesterday.
I, I did share that with Tim Nelson in, in Land Services, and I talked, uh, I talked with, um, why am I not coming up with her name now?
Oh, there?
No. April, with April McCormick, and, uh, she, she commented back and said that she appreciated us looking at that at this point in time, they weren't sure, but if there were any position that we could support, uh, Graham Portage, and she would let us know that in the future, so.
Okay, um...
I'm sorry, just to get it in a minute, uh, there, there will be a name change for a committee that I'm on, uh, so we should maybe get this in a minute. Instead of Cook County Historical Society, it's going to be Historic Cook County. They're doing a legal name change in the future, so. If you look in your, uh, handout, it's not on the first page, but it's under financial documents. This was supposed to take place yesterday, but we didn't have a forum, so, but it will happen.
Right.
I, I don't, I think it was part of the process, we went through a pretty extensive process of, uh, capacity building, and looking to our future, and so, uh, it was recommended from that group that we get a name that would be a little bit more specific, too, because there's a lot of confusion about Cook County Historical Society, because, uh, and so they would like to just make that Historic Cook County. And, you know, I, I don't know, I think that's why. It's a marketing issue.
Oh, marketing, marketing's important. You know, if it's more effective to be Historic Cook County.
Well, and I think there, I should just mention, too, that there's a, you know, there will be restructuring that's going on. Uh, we will have a, a director of the, the history museum, a director now of the Johnson Heritage Post, and then overall, just through Historic Cook County, uh, executive director, which is Carrie, and then, uh, we have, uh, Ms. Davis, that will be the, she has been working with, um, with, um, Johnson Heritage Post, and then Martha Monaca, uh, will be the director of the historic, um, historical building. So I think that's another reason, is that, uh, now it's, you know, the Historical Society has got its own building, but now it's incorporating the Johnson Heritage Post as part of that, so, uh, it's sort of an umbrella name for those two entities.
So how does this affect their budget?
Well, it, uh, you know, they're looking at various areas to fund it, and part of it will be, uh, there's a financial, you know, strategic plan to increase funding. Uh, the Johnson Heritage Post, I, I don't wanna get into that, but it has so much more potential to generate funds, and I think they're positioning themselves to do that, as well as, you know, um, I, in, for this one year, I've really seen some tremendous improvement in that organization, and I think its future is gonna grow and grow and grow. And so, uh, we're just getting started, and, um, time will tell, you know, but I, I think their strategic plans are sound, and I think, uh, trying to get some new board members, uh, as well, some have been added, and, and, uh, we're sort of at a minimum number right now, and, and, um, we're going to do some restructuring, we're looking at possibly revising the bylaws, which are quite antiquated, and, and so forth.
They're historical.
Yeah, they're, well said. That's very kind. But I, I'm sorry, but I, I could go on and on and on, but I really think that, uh, we're heading in a, a great direction, and I'm, I've been very pleased in working with that group. It's just been a good process.
And I will be addressing Ann Bealman's concern about, um, so I'm going down to ARDC, um, for a meeting on Thursday, and I'll meet with Andy, and I'll just assure her that there's good things happening, so I'll address that with her.
Well, it sounds like there's some confusion, because there will be a public input.
Well, I, I guess I could comment on this one. I'm on the steering committee, so, um, you know, there was opportunity for input to be done through technology, and that was the approach I wanted to do, so people could suggest certain areas. Now, there's been a prototypes sent out indicating where the areas are, and then the opportunity for comment. I'm on record, as of our last meeting, uh, and I followed up with it with an email to other board members that we need to have a public hearing. So I'm on record as that, I mean...
Definitely will be.
So that's, uh, and I think, uh, we'll meet next Tuesday, and, um, maybe there's ways we can still get this done, but, um, all I, I'm on record as having a public hearing, and, and, uh, whether we can do this in this timeline or not, uh, I think we'll talk about it Tuesday.
Well, Myron, isn't the 28th just the deadline for the paperwork, not the deadline for the project?
Yeah, I think it's by definition, you know, how you wanna approach this, and, you know, what do we need to do, and, uh, I, I, I think it's really great that you talk, you're a member of ARDC, and that you talk about, you know, providing, but I can't, I only can speak for myself in saying that I'm on record as having a public hearing. And I, my concern was that it sets a precedent that I don't like to see as a county commissioner, that we don't have public hearings on some decisions, at least that I'm a part of, so, but...
And we're with Contract, you know, with Andy, and ARDC till December, and Andy's worked up here a lot, so he, he won't let us down. He knows what to do, so...
A lot, a lot of good things have happened, and I think we just have to be careful about how we communicate, and, you know, there's always two sides to a story, so we gotta...
At least. That's true. Commissioner Bursch, for the radio today?
I guess so, yeah.
Okay. And before we adjourn, we have...
Yes, we have anniversaries. Just one thing I wanna touch quick before anniversaries, on my comment on the surfaces, it's an either-or. I understand that people love paper, but I don't think that we should be investing in electronics and doing the paper. So if all the commissioners wanna go back to paper, that's great. I just don't think we should invest time and energy of that staff, because, you know, anytime we have an issue with our surfaces, then we have to go take up their time, and if, if that's not necessary, then let's go back to packets.
Then how would we get anybody's email?
We would still have emails. We'd still have access to email. We had access to email before we had the surfaces. The purpose of the surfaces were for, was for board packets.
Yeah.
So I, it doesn't matter to me, it's just, I don't want us to spend tons of money on things. All right, anniversaries. We have Tim Nelson, 19 years, in the now formally named Land Services. There's a plaque on the door now, so it's no longer planning and zoning. And Joyce Trulard has been in our recorder's office for 17 years, and we've got three staff in that office, and they are all in the decades for working for us, so thank you very, very much.
Wow. Okay, no other business? I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I move to adjourn.
It's important.
Bye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.